Select Board's meeting, December 3rd, 2019. In attendance, Mr. Fox, Mr. Moguln, Mr. Dede, and Mrs. Pendleton.
Thank you and good night. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019. First thing we have is public comments. If anyone that is not on the agenda that would like to make a statement to the Board, this would be an opportunity to do that. If you'd like to make a statement, I'd ask that you please stand and state your name and address. Is there anyone here at this time who would like to make a statement? All right. Then, I'm gonna take this out of order, but we'd like to have Chief Bishop introduce our newest officer.
Evening, Police Commissioners. I would like to introduce you. I know you've met her before, but officially presenter to you, Officer Kelly Parks. Photos and stuff like that. There you go. Get on over there and photos and shake hands.
Yeah.
Put it on. He looks very aware with it.
Yeah, I was. Yeah, he looks serious.
Where's the flag? The flag's here.
There you go.
Okay.
Hope got in here right in time.
Yeah, they just finished their.
You're gonna bring the flag?
And this is Officer Kelly Parks being officially introduced to the Board of Selectmen.
Ms. Lee, I know you spoke to Dennis.
You guys go first and then we'll do a couple here.
Right there, yeah. Everybody look cheerful.
There we go. Very friendly.
And if you could fit all of us in there, too.
Yeah, come on.
Our Facebook thing behind you guys, what do you think? She can't do it all. Maybe the chief can do it for you. Tommy, get over here, too.
Come on. Just put him down.
No, we could fit anything. Suck it in.
I don't know if I'm harder or not.
All right.
Wait, Joe, move over.
Move over?
Joe.
Joe, am I Joe?
Okay, ready?
Cindy. Okay, now look at me. Okay, look at Cindy again.
Sorry, Cindy. Turn it.
Joe, move in.
You gotta turn that camera.
You want to walk away?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Now we'll fit.
Oh, yeah. There's extra room. That was my song. You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
That's it, Kelly.
Kelly, go home from bed.
Did you get a text or something from Tommy, too, or something?
I was just gonna ask that. Can I do it tomorrow, or, I mean, Thursday or Friday?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, we'll see you in the morning.
Oh, you're here. I thought she was on her days off now.
She worked tonight, don't you?
Yeah, today's my last day.
Yeah, well, we'll figure out some more.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
All right, and you did fill her in about leeway for Police Commissioners?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right, all right. That's what makes you.
That's the first thing I'm sure they know of.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Be safe.
Yes, please.
Congratulations.
Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Chief, for bringing Officer Parks in. All right, so, I'll tell you what. We have Lieutenant Landis here, so why don't we take you out of order so that you don't have to spend all night here with us?
I like that.
And you are here to talk to us about fingerprinting.
Correct. So, this is kind of a situation we've been dealing with for many years. Cindy sends over to us applications, mainly for me, for the liquor licensing and the background checks, but currently, with our current decorie system that she has access to and that I cannot run for employment or anything other than criminal, she gets just Massachusetts information. It's limited, but it's enough to ascertain if a person's suitable or not with regards to a background check from Mass. But you can't check a database outside of Massachusetts, like the FBI database. This would allow us to, the person gets, comes in, they have to make an appointment, we fingerprint them, get sent in, and then it gets met compared to many other databases. So if a guy from Connecticut is applying for a permit in town and he's got a criminal history outside of Massachusetts, we would be alerted to it. Now, if it was a criminal investigation, certainly I'd have access to that, but under very strict laws prohibiting those types of queries to the database, I can't do that under these conditions.
And can I say something? Canvassing is a big issue because a lot of these people are hired by these companies to canvas because they just got out of jail, they know they're desperate for money, and they come from like Georgia and out west. And there was one situation where I just didn't have a good vibe, so you guys ran it and ended up.
Because we had a situation with him and ran him, not just because we knew we couldn't do that. We had a situation with him in the street and ran him at that point in time.
Oh, okay.
And that's why I'm off at that point in time.
But so, and, I mean, they might have a criminal history, but we need to know.
We wouldn't know about it unless somehow we had an incident dealing with them or allowed us to do an investigatory, you know, query. What I did come across is Pittsfield Police Department, they have, you have to adopt a policy to do this, and you also have to have it approved by Attorney General's Office and then through the FBI. There's a big process. But they, you know, pick what they thought was important for, you know, the individuals coming into their community, the Hockers licenses, ice cream vendors.
Oh, those guys.
They're first on the list, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah. No, but the ice, like the trucks and stuff like that, people wanting the permits, and certainly the people applying for liquor permits, I think is important. So, we would adopt a policy, send it off for approval. There's quite a few steps that have to happen, but it just gives us a greater ability to know who we're bringing into town. So, when I came across this and, you know, another thing that Cindy had sent over, and we really just could check so far, and it was like, it's time, we really need to address this.
I do do every new liquor people, and I do the existing ones every three years.
Because I spoke to the ABBCC and they're, and with regards to this, and they're like, oh, well, we do, you know, quarry checks on them. Well, yes, you do, but you're only running through the state of Massachusetts and I have the responsibilities. Oh, you're right.
But that's after you've already approved.
Right.
Yep.
So, even their background check is limited to the state of Mass. So this just, I think, just, again, with so many different people, got so many hands in different places that are outside the community and they wanna come in, it just allows us to get a better feeling for who they might be.
I thought I'd looked into it a while back.
You wouldn't be able.
Don't quote me, but I think there's a fee.
There is. Thirty dollars.
If I were to do it.
To the, to, no, it would be, it's a thirty dollar fee according, if you read in there, it's a thirty five, thirty dollar fee that goes to the state, and we would, we could charge like a fifteen dollar fee for our processing.
For?
For our administrative fee.
And you would do the quarry checks?
Because, yeah, we, then we would fingerprint them. You would still do, they'd do a quarry release, you'd still, because I can't run quarry.
So if I run it, it's not.
You run it, you run it, and that's as far as it goes for Mass. What this does is this goes to the FBI database, the state police, they run it, they check it against the FBI database, they send us back the information. I can't release it, but then I can say if this person's suitable or not.
Why seven of you guys have approval if they've got a history?
It will be, though, a longer process for some of these vendors who'd like to come into town, you know, and, hey, I wanna go canvass these neighborhoods this weekend. Well, you're gonna have to wait for this to be done.
We can wait for the quarries.
Yeah.
We do when they come back in twenty-four hours.
Okay. So I don't know, I'm not sure how quick, you know, but that this, I'm sure it's relatively quick. And we, with our electronic machine, you know, we can take the prints electronically, but we have to submit them, we have to mail, still mail them, but at least by doing them electronically, you're not gonna get any bad prints back, because the machine won't let you take a bad print. Where in the past, before we had this capability, you wouldn't know you had insufficient ridge details until they looked at it and sent it back to you, because we were doing everything inked. So it should be relatively quick.
And we even check to make sure that people don't have bad taxes, because we're not gonna give them a license or a permit if they owe them, you know, so they can make money if they owe the town money. So, we are checking as much as we can, and, I mean.
All right. We all agree that it's necessary. The way I read this, though, it's talking about a bylaw or an ordinance requirement, so we might, we'll have to work with Town Council.
Absolutely, yeah.
To see if we have to go to a town meeting, you know, and do it that way. And I think that's probably how we're gonna have to do it. Pittsfield's a city council, so they could just do it that way, but I think we're gonna have to do it through a town meeting vote. So I think we'll work with Town Council. Do you wanna do that with the CAO?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whatever, I mean, whatever needs to be done, I mean, I can.
So we'll tell Carl that he's gonna work with Lieutenant Landis and Town Council, find out exactly what they wanna do. But I think also, if we do have to go to a town meeting, we wanna educate people the reason behind this ahead of time, so that we don't have this brouhaha unnecessary.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't know that you get much, only because many, we field a lot of calls for these people that are coming into their neighborhoods.
Right.
Who they are, how do you know who they are?
Door knockers.
The elderly especially, they get paranoid.
Yeah.
I think as long as people understand what we're trying to do, we're not, we're not going overboard, we're just doing what is reasonable to make sure that people that come in.
We wouldn't be signaling anybody out, it'd be everybody that applies for that certain.
I bet you we don't have to go to a town meeting. I'm gonna bet a dollar.
Okay. All right. Okay. If we don't have to, that'd be great. If we can just do an ordinance, you know, but I don't know. I don't know. So anyways, that works with you. You'll work with Carl and Town Council?
Yeah. Because we're gonna have to do it hand in hand, and we're gonna have to facilitate the suitability end of it when the results come back, so.
And we don't have to reinvent the wheel.
No.
We can steal, steal all the information as possible.
Yeah, there's a policy that actually the state, and that's kind of a boilerplate, that the state puts out that the minimum requirements of the policy, and you can shape it. And Town Council will be able to grab that.
I think you're, I think this could be an ordinance part of, I mean, if we can.
Go through the.
We just modified the tax sale thing on a.
That's, we don't just get in the police business, that's on the way we would hear.
The tax sales, I mean, they're still getting a permit, but that would be really tough.
But, you know, I, I know, I read this several times.
Yeah, but.
You're right. I just, the way they keep emphasizing the fact that you have to have this properly in place before you can do anything, that's all I'm nervous about.
That's just, we'll just.
Because I don't have time to do that.
Make sure the ice cream is highlighted.
I actually had this done years ago. I got fingerprinted, I did.
And the guy held it up and said, oh, damn.
For some reason, the past chief wanted me to do it, and I did. I got my picture taken, it's a big thing, it's in the ice cream truck.
You went through the whole.
Went through the whole process.
Process when you started this.
He wanted a hundred and eighty bucks. I don't know what it was. It was cash, but okay.
All right. So we have a plan.
Okay. On another note, quickly then, I did notice on the agenda, you guys will be looking at accepting some policies that I sent over for review. There's like six of them for now. What's happening is, I spoke to Carl, and he just asked me to quickly just bring this up to you guys. What's happening is, we're going through our policies, it's gonna be quite lengthy process, so I'll review a few, send them to you, and I've made some changes. Nothing major, we're following the best practices of these accreditation standards, even though we're not accredited, but these are, you know, what the Mass Chiefs of Police attorneys have put together, and a lot of them are just revised from current old policies. I will send you the policies that exist that were prior to those, though. So I'll do that tomorrow, so you can see. Most of them are almost verbatim, a few, the, that just don't apply to us, you'll see the change, but what I would recommend, and we can wait, because I know the way the process works is you generally would have thirty days to review. If nothing is determined, then it becomes basically set in stone, this is the policy. Not looking to say thirty days is a done deal, this is a process. It's put together by attorneys, they're basing it on accreditation standards, some of which don't apply to us. I would like to see these get sent to our, you know, how you look at them quick, if you, and then when you have the other one, you can compare to, if you feel like, all right, this is, this is, we're fine with this, but if you see something in there, I'd like to send them to Town, to the Town Council for review, too, because I just, you know, if we, a couple things don't apply to us, just because of the size of our department or things that we can't do, because we don't have, for an example, a matron assigned to us when it comes to cell watches. So we have to adopt a little different standard, much of which you'll see in accreditation standards are all recommendations, most of which we're all doing. But these are boilerplates that pretty much all Mass PDs are dealing with. But in the end, I'll leave it up to you guys to determine, once you've read it, if you wanna send it on to Town Council. As far as I'm concerned, the thirty day window doesn't have to make cut in stone. Let us know, we'll know if you plan on sending it off, and when it, we get it, we get it.
These procedures exist today, and they're just being updated.
What it is, is like.
We don't have the red lines here.
Yeah.
This is the new procedure.
Right. Those were implemented in 2018, on the Mass Chiefs of Police, forwarded them back. When I look on, you can get these from their, on their website. So 2018, those are all replacements from former models. And so now I'm going through and reviewing them all, and I'm finding, like, we would have one that was, the last revision was 2007, and one was put out in 2014 but wasn't implemented. Not to say ours were wrong and we were running by under good standards, but, you know, best things change. And you'll see as I forward, like our cell watch policy, a lot of the verbiage in it is different when they get to risk assessments versus how the prior one was just basically saying, this is how you'll monitor. Now they break it down to, you know, moderate, high levels of risk, so you'll see that. So those are the important things that, because it has a lot to do with how we bring in people, and it does obviously unfortunately affect our budgets in some areas, because now where we maybe got away with just bringing in a, say, a dispatcher for cell watch, and there's gonna be the scenarios, because of risk factors, we could no longer do that, because their level of training is such that they can't go into a cell, they can't intervene if somebody's having a medical emergency or some kind of mental health crisis. So it changes how we do things. So it's, to me, it's kinda open-ended as far as no deadline, I'd rather have the discussion, and we all agree on it, and if we're not comfortable with what I submitted, that we send it to Town Council and let them give us the blessing, so.
All right, so you're gonna send out the old policy.
Yeah, tomorrow I'll get them together, you'll have them to compare to those, but there is a lot of these, and I don't wanna inundate you guys.
Our chairman has plenty of time.
Okay.
I'll do the first six, and Joe will do the next six.
Yeah.
We'll do the last thirty-six.
Yeah, that's kinda how it is.
All right. So why don't you send those to us? We'll review this next meeting, because I think we wanna do this expedited. You know, we don't, because unfortunately, we're gonna be going into budget season, we're gonna be doing.
I'm trying to send you, picking out the most important stuff that we need to change and get on board with now, and then the smaller stuff, we'll just keep working towards it.
You got it.
The big one is the one that probably most liability.
Yeah, exactly. Like our pursuit policy, use of force, and our cell watch.
Kevin, why don't you highlight things that might affect the budget, so that when we meet with you.
We did, we did talk about that when he submits it.
Yes.
I did tell him that he submits the one for the cell watch, that one's gonna have an impact on us if we bring it up to a standard.
And if there's anything else that you see, we might as well get it out in the open now and so everybody's aware of it.
We'll cover letter with it. If we make these changes, this could affect this area as it comes, though.
Absolutely.
All right.
And this is, this is actually the first round of them.
How much do we really use the cells, though?
Yes, we were very fortunate when the sheriff came and started the program where we get to bring our people over there. We have saved a lot of money. Because where we used to have, when, you know, yeah, we might have to bring a guy in for a particular, especially during a domestic where there's a six hour cooling period before we can transport him over to the Sheriff's Department. So we have cell watch for those six hours, whereas the old system, generally if it's a restraining order violation where there's no bail, and it happens on a Friday, or where there's a holiday involved, we have to have a body on with that individual until that next court date. And, you know, that, that was.
Four days, right?
Yeah, and it's, you know, twenty-four, seven. So, I mean, we're saving a lot of money in the long run. We just might have to use an officer more where then we use a dispatcher, but the amount of times we're doing it is so limited that it's not gonna be nearly as what it, what it cost us in the past.
Because we haven't seen the policy yet, but it's factorial, too, so if it's a lower risk, you could continue with your existing policy, but.
Basically, yeah. Basically, what they're considering in the policy, a normal condition would be an individual, say, that was stopped, they had a warrant for, maybe they pay a ticket or something, and they're not able to raise their bail, or they're gonna have to stay for a period of time till we can get them out of there. But there's no risk factors, there's zero. But when we do a suicide risk questionnaire with them, as soon as you hit one check in that questionnaire, it's, you become a low risk. And that low risk, based on this new policy, becomes a different level of what you gotta do. You know, intoxication, right off the bat, it changes the status of everything, because a person's behavior can change at any time, or his health can change at any time. So those are the things that the policy gets into, and then there's more, the risks multiply, the more you have to do while you're monitoring them. From a thirty minute watch to a fifteen minute watch, to where you could have just done it on a video, an audio, you have to physically go and have eyes on this person, you know, so you'll see all that stuff, that'll be coming shortly.
Gotcha.
Okay?
Well, they do have some prison guards from Manhattan that are available in case, in case you need anybody.
Yeah, yeah.
You know.
They'll be okay if it's somebody to watch during the day. It's the nighttime we're concerned with.
It's half your budget. Right here in his room.
You got it.
Half of it?
We're off the clock.
We perform.
Bob, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
Thanks, Lieutenant. Sorry.
All right. Since we've taken everybody else out of order.
Hey, Lieutenant, be careful when you get to the border, the roads suck.
Oh, I know.
We'll take you guys out of order.
I appreciate it. Dispatch liaison, Bob Eck was supposed to be with us tonight also to talk about the dispatching part of the project, but he had a meeting last night, they got postponed to tonight, and he couldn't get away from himself. You know, we were prepared to bring him in, to see him. I think you were given a package a couple weeks ago about the street change ideas that we're looking at?
There was a little confusion. They just got their packets tonight.
Huh.
I got all three for some reason, so I read three, I read it three times.
You got all three copies?
Yeah.
In your mail folder?
Yeah. So I just, luckily, the vice chairman was good enough to rip them apart and give everybody, but I think you can go ahead and they can read along.
Do I make it, really, real quickly, is that, when this whole street change thing started, I have to admit, I didn't have firsthand knowledge, it was a project that I already started prior to myself. I went into the meeting cold, I was just kinda going by some input that I had received, you know, for the project. As I looked at things over this past year, I don't know if I totally agree with what was presented that night as far as making these people change their, their street names out there. I do think it's quite an issue for, to put this on the people out there. My research shows that, the best of my knowledge, this whole thing started with one situation where an outside agency came into our town and got confused on one street name out there, and they went to the wrong location. We can't backtrack it to find out if they just went to the wrong one, because they misunderstood where they were supposed to go, or if the dispatch gave them the wrong address to go with, but that was my understanding where this whole thing started from. We have seven roads in town that have the same suffix, i.e. road, street, avenue, or terrace, okay? And that's where it becomes the issue. We reached out to State E-911. They have no issues with towns that have the same name if the suffix is different, okay? They further indicate that numerous towns and cities have numerous roads with the same name, but again, the suffix is different. The only thing is mandated by State 911 is a town cannot have two roads in the same, with the same name and suffix in a different location. So you can't have Main Street in the east end of town, and you can't have Main Street in the west end of town. That's where one of them has to be changed. So they have no regulations on just if, as long as it's a different suffix, you know, with the program there. Again, I spoke a little bit further with the representatives of E-911, they really think with the technology that's out there right now, and as long as our dispatchers are trained, you know, to do their job, they don't see why, they see this is more of a training thing for our dispatcher than it is to go ahead and make the, or change the roads, you know, out there for the people. As they said, all dispatcher train first, ask the question, what is the location of your emergency? That's a question that should be right off of it. We looked at other communities in the area out there. You know, South Hadley has ten streets with duplicate names with different suffixes, and the one that really stood out is Westfield has thirty-four roads with the same name, and Westfield has one that really stands out, which is Oak Avenue, Oak Avenue Extension, Oak Lane, Oak Street, Oak Terrace. So somehow these towns are all living and they're, you know, and they're getting the emergency services that they need, I don't know why we have to go and change the names and put the burden on our, on our citizens out there.
If you look at, I think Westfield doesn't even, that one's insidious, because there's like six of them, but like City View in Westfield is also treacherous, because you've got north, south, and east and west, both named City View. One's Boulevard and one's whatever, but they intersect with each other, too.
And as I'm saying, so somehow they've adapted to their, their way of doing it without making the burden beyond the citizen, they have to go through and change their whole deeds and mail, you know, and stuff like that. So we did, we met with Officer, we met with Dispatcher Eck, he's pointed out some things. Every time a call card comes up, there is directions right there specifically telling you, and that's where the second sheet kinda shows you, a call card will come up telling you how to get to that location. He went a step further, and he's created this sheet on the back here where it shows you specifically, the one that says A at the top.
Joe, do you have it all? Because I think I have like eighteen copies of it.
I have eighteen copies, too.
This is a disaster.
Yeah. I'm sorry, how to filter do it?
It's all good.
There must have been five copies made.
Of each.
And she didn't realize it, so she made five more.
Yeah, when I send stuff, yeah, when I send stuff over, I try to do the five copies.
Yeah, you don't have to, because.
Not a big deal. We're following.
At least you got it.
We're stumbling through.
So this is a step further we've already taken right now. If you guys agree with what we're trying to talk about here, is like Southwick Hill Road, number thirty-eight, Southwick Hill Road. You'll see, it pops right up top in bold letters, says site information.
Yeah.
Okay. As soon as he puts that number in there, it clicks in down below. Advise responders access to residence must be made from Depot Street. And he could do that for every one of those houses that are on these seven streets. It's not hundreds of houses. You know what I'm saying?
Okay.
Okay, so and that's the same thing, so we take a look at also, B would be the same thing, responders, access must be made from College Highway, you know, at that point in time.
Kevin, do you know if it makes an alert or like a noise, a ding or anything?
I'm not sure if it makes a ding, I just know that pops up right here and then that shows up down below. You know, it's only one question we could ask Bob, you know, at that point in time. And again, like I said, we're talking seven streets and if these dispatchers in these other communities can pull it off with numerous streets, are we, I don't know, I have faith that our dispatchers could do it with some training, where if a sticker has to be put on the 911 monitor, that these streets are always right in front of them, that if anybody comes from here, you know, has to go to that. And like 911 says, the mapping capabilities now compared to what they used to be, that shows up on their screens right there, is a lot better than what it used to be. The only one that we'd still be looking at would be the Southwick Hill because both of them are called Southwick Hill right now. I've met with emails and phone calls back from some of their representatives, they don't have a problem, I think we've listed a name that they're talking about.
Iron Horse.
Or not. They understand that, that they would go with the Iron Horse name and not just change the suffix, you know, because we'd have to change the Southwick Hill that's already there, they don't have a suffix on the end of their name, it's just Southwick Hill. So if we wanted to make it clean, we'd have to do Southwick Hill and burden those people that have been there their whole life, you know, to add road to theirs and then add street or something to the other, you know, Southwick Hill over there. So, we had discussion with the fire chief about it, you know, also, we're both on board that we feel that we can still provide safety, you know, to these people with some education and training. If you went for it, I would still bring in all those people back in again, like that meeting that we had with them, you know, that night, because I'd wanna explain to the people that live on like an Evergreen, this is the way we're going to be looking at it. If they had major concerns, they didn't feel safety with it, then we could readdress it and add, you know, change their name, but we really got hammered by the people that night about making these changes. I think they'd all be agreeable that they feel comfortable with what we're presenting, you know, to the board at that point in time. And then we'd also bring in, again, the town attorney explained to him about the deeds and the process of how that stuff, you know, goes with it, but it's really just back on, you know, your guys' input if you...
Yeah, it's difficult to ask people to make a change like that, but the three, well, how many units is up on Southwick Hill on those condos, like half a dozen?
Seventeen and goes to thirty-five, I think, for the new one.
I think they're all built.
Right, and I think for their safety, they, you know, they'd be cleaner and be cleaner. So, no, I think it's a good recommendation, you know. Evergreen, down by the lakes.
Yep, yep.
Where Kathleen Carlson, she'd go in, Voice or Echo or, I forget, no.
Because the road has geographical split.
Right, that's, okay.
See, that way that Bob...
The other ones off of Granville Road, right?
No, 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 I'm talking about, down at the lake, it's a split, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what's your, you don't have any problems with that?
The way Bob explained to me, that would just be dispatched out of the, you know, the site information that pops up, it would be seventeen Evergreen Street off of Voice.
Okay.
But the address number would trip, so whether it's coming off of Voice...
So you're not worried about that?
No.
This is where, that's where they split it, where the pump station is.
You got it.
Right, right.
So you come in on one way or you come in on the other?
Didn't we have a thing there for the gentleman that passed away?
Yes. Yeah.
Because interesting, the research is even more.
Right, the good, the good senator went to the other side and that's why we're there waiting.
Really? Well, that's the interesting thing, because really Evergreen Street, I never knew it, is in our IMC software, we have Evergreen Street, Evergreen Terrace.
Right.
But technically, if you read our town road thing, it's Evergreen Street all the way across.
Okay.
You know, and it's weird how things got put into our IMC, you know, part of it.
Even though it's geographical, very...
Right. So what it would be is if any of those numbers that pop up between Mrs. Carlson's and down to number twenty would be fifteen Evergreen off of Voice.
Okay.
You know, then the other one would be twenty-seven Evergreen off of Island Pond or Wood.
Island Pond.
Because, like this fire chief said too, is he may implement it too on his part, if you listen to dispatchers in the city and stuff, we, our guys haven't done it, but it may be a new thing we may implement with, when we talk further with it, is like give a, always do a cross street.
Okay.
If you listen to real, you know, fire, you know, more on their part, they love their cross streets and stuff, right? You know, because it gives you a starting point.
Well, because they're laying, you know, the thought processes hydrants and...
You got it, so they know what they're rolling into, you know. And I think what is, I tried to explain to one of our dispatchers the other day, is that things have changed, okay? We don't have all the same EMTs living in town, just like we don't have the police officers that lived in town for their whole life, so we're bringing EMTs, police officers that, they don't know these little, you know...
Can't tell them, go down to where Lou and Ray used to be.
Sometime go to Chuck's. So we've gotta make sure our software is up to date, you know, on the stuff and training is done on our part too. And again, speaking with our dispatch liaison, you know, he's gotten a wish, he has full faith in himself and the other dispatcher, that they'll adapt to it and we won't have any issues.
We've had issues with guys in the ambulance putting in the GPS that's there and giving them the wrong directions.
Right.
Yeah.
The ranch, the ranch one is a big one that keeps popping up.
Comes up the hillside, you gotta come there.
So this is where the dispatchers too, may be more above and beyond what we've been talking, like I said, they gotta be more specific, they've gotta be more specific with their directions because, again, you don't know who's responding to those calls, you know, nowadays out there, so. We're asking you to take on advisory, you can read the paperwork more since you didn't have it on time and get back to us, but that would be our game plan, if you approve it, is still have another meeting with all these people again.
Yeah, I think you should go forward with the meeting because like Doug was mentioning, we've been kicking this can for a long, long time.
The original sign...
When a lot of us were young.
Yeah, I know, I know.
That's when we first got here we started.
Oh, this was even before that.
I mean Kirk was involved.
A lot of people that are on the original letter can be visited at the cemetery.
Right.
No kidding.
So I say, go forward with the meeting and, you know...
And you guys still left have another meeting after that to accept whatever we come up with and stuff, but okay.
I think, from my perspective, Southwick Hill is a no-brainer.
Yeah.
I mean, that's...
Absolutely.
You know, and the other one that you brought up, I also thought was a no-brainer. Maybe it should be Terrace and Street and maybe we can...
You have an Evergreen Terrace off of Granville Road, so it'd have to be, you'd have to come up with something different.
We can finesse that a little bit more because that...
I would rather rely on the dispatcher telling whoever's going than relying on memory because you confuse them, there's just days, which one is which.
You still do both, but I'm like, I know that one off of Wood and then that is confusing and that hasn't always been like that.
And, well, I'm gonna tell you, from a delivery standpoint, you know, when Southwick Hill got implemented, I mean, we were getting phone calls, UPS was confused, FedEx was confused, Southwick Floris was confused.
Google is confused.
Right, Google is confused. And you get that same thing down at Evergreen, where Kathleen's, where you got that split, you know? You know, the natives know, but the delivery guys, they got a little trouble.
But again, it could be as simple as if you're taking that for your, first like your business, someone says I want orders planned for Evergreen Street, okay? And what street does that connect to?
Yeah.
So the longer you know it's coming off of Voice, you know it's the first one. And that's the same thing.
I guess I take it where, from that perspective, from a non-emergent situation, those guys, UPS is getting an order from Amazon or from wherever, they don't, they don't place for a cross street on there, you're getting the address. Same thing with the Floris, it comes in Teleflora or whatever, they don't have a cross street, it's just got the address and you've gotta figure it out. I, from an emergent standpoint though, I think it's more, and that one in particular, Southwick Hill's a no-brainer, we talked about it, but it's, you know, someone calling you because someone's having a crisis, they are not of the clearest mind, they make that phone call.
Well, we're not asking them at all, oh no.
I know, but you may not, if they're calling you from a cellphone in their house and they go twenty-three Evergreen and they hang up the phone.
Yep.
Even that minute or two minutes while you go around, you know, Southwick Hill, we talked about it, we've had it happen, we went to the wrong place at Southwick Hill, not any swap, but we went up the wrong hill.
Correct.
So, I think that one should be looked at and maybe there's a way to finesse it. Evergreen Place, I know we have Terrace off of Granville, but maybe that's something that can, along the lines with Westfield, can do something similar to what they've done with Oak Street, Oak Place, whatever, and it's already on the books, maybe those deeds are already correct and as our street naming signs are wrong, it might be something very, very simple to fix. But, and you know, and the other ones, I see the point. But I think from, I look at it more from, you know, from a practical matter, it's a problem, but it's not life and death.
Right.
But the ones when it's emergency response, you know, the police officer spend a lot of time on the road every day, you know? But, you know, EMTs, they spend a lot of time on the road, but they're going to different places, they're not in the sector as much. If you tell Bridges someplace, probably a bad example, he's a local, but you tell someone who's not from town, that's been here for more than, you know, a year, they know every nook and cranny by then, or pretty much, you know? Just my two cents on it. But I appreciate you moving the ball forward because like I said, this is a thirty-year project that should have been thirty weeks...
Oh, it's been going on a long time.
Literally thirty years.
How does it work with the two states issue? With the state line, does that, nine-one-one wise, clarify that as well?
As far as, we just know that the two states, whatever the one's on the Connecticut side, we just know our numbers go from one to a certain number and it ends at that point in time.
One of them's in Connecticut to get to Mass and one's in Mass to get to Connecticut, right?
No, both of them are from Massachusetts.
Right. Both in Massachusetts.
They're just right next to each other. See, like that one, I didn't make the copy for...
It was on that special I watched about Southfield, because you have to get to Connecticut from, on two states, you have to go through Mass to get there, right?
Yes.
Right.
Like the example Eck had given me was like for two states out, the one that's on the left-hand side would be two states out, and you know, like exit left or enter left would be the one that's on the left end. You enter both of them at the same time.
Yeah, they have a sign right there.
And he would just put in the notes right there, it would be left turn onto it, so...
And we never go to the left, you know, we're always going to the left.
Right.
All right, so we have a plan, we're gonna set up the meeting.
Yep, yep.
Probably after the holidays.
Okay, you're not thinking he's doing it, he's not thinking you're doing it, right?
I think I'll still just run with it and be in contact with you and, yep.
Yeah, I know, that was, that was hope.
Oh, I thought, I thought it was hopeless.
I was thinking of you.
You got it.
No news on this.
All right, so that one, we'll run on that one.
We'll have a paper tomorrow.
And now we need to talk to you about...
Ambulance.
Ambulance. And I think we're, Kevin, did you have anything else?
I did have one more about the provisional.
Oh, that's right, okay, let's do the provisional.
Okay. I didn't get a letter off to you guys, Carol was going to forward you an email I sent over about two o'clock, I don't know if you guys did get your...
We did forward it.
Yep.
There's a printed copy of it there. Cindy, there's a copy of it also. I'm interested in utilizing a reserve officer, Mike Gerard, as a provisional officer to temporarily alleviate the staffing shortage due to the upcoming one-year military deployment of Officer Parker. The provisional officer will be utilized for a period agreeable to myself and the union. I'm asking for the provisional for two reasons. One, it would keep us at our staffing level that we presently have established prior to Officer Parker being deployed. Adding reserve officer as a provisional would assist me in not having to reduce the overtime budget because many of the shifts that Officer Parker will be absent from will need to be filled with overtime. As you know, we've done this numerous times in the past with the thing, I think you know the reasons and the logic, you know, for we do it. The only thing different is we'll be negotiating with the union, is usually it's like a one-hundred-and-eighty-day thing and you revisit it a hundred, every hundred-and-eighty days and hopefully the union is still on board with it. I'm gonna be requesting that they give me a year commitment because Mike Gerard is willing to leave his job and I would like him to at least have the comfort to know he's got a year employment with us. Fully understanding if somehow Parker's deployment was shortened, he would be, he would be moved back to reserve unit, you know, at that point in time. But that's something I have to work out with, you know, with the union at that point in time. So I guess I'm just, Carol Smith just left it to you guys, if you approve it, somehow you assign one of you becomes the contact after that for the MOA that was explained to me.
I don't think this is a big problem, you wanna make a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go with it.
Thank you, sir.
Kevin, how many year commitment are you asking for?
Excuse me?
How many year commitment, did you say?
One year. Again, we don't know for sure, but that's what I'm gonna be trying to work with the, you know, with the union. And that letter was sent off to them today and hopefully they'll get a response because I wouldn't, because I think he's actually done on Friday and he's got vacation time, stuff and everything else in between, he's gotta go down to get medical exams and everything, but we're not worrying about that until the deployment time.
Parker's done Friday.
Yeah, yeah. And then January third is when he's actual, he heads off to serve our country there, so it's a big thing, big thing for our department to lose a guy like that for a whole year, but proud that he's going out to do it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All here, sir.
See ya.
All right, I don't...
You would buy it.
Did I go buy it?
Yep.
Yell out.
There's an ambulance in the direction. Coming up next.
There we go, okay, nine A. All right, so we reviewed this at our last meeting and we were, we took care of half of it, correct?
I think you said the raise to twelve-five, twelve-five.
And then you wanted to put a proposal in front concerning elected in a...
It's the second to last, that last page.
Yeah, it's the abatement process.
All right, so Doug.
Sir, proposal for the...
It would be a proposal that, in case a town employee or elected official, okay, they would strike being injured in the course of his or her duties Southway, transported by the Southwick Fire Department Amity, neither the town nor the employee shall be billed, okay? And I know you were vocal about this, so have you had time to digest that?
I have, and I don't think it's a good idea. I'd love the idea, I truly do, but I just, I, a taxpayer should not be paying for my ambulance, right? That's it, that's simple.
Okay.
As scary as it sounds, but, you know, unless it's under fifty bucks. But it just, it does, it boils right back to that whole mentality and I do appreciate it, because I hear some old timers tell me, and we all know who they are, you know, I never got charged for, and not that they have lately, but back in the day, you know, if you served on that crew, they'll never went to your house, you know?
Right, well, some of that was just that Medicare took care of whatever, we're talking about the balances.
The old fellows, I just smile and say, those were yesteryears.
Okay, I think Mr. Mogul has made his position clear, Mr. Diddy has made his position clear, I gotta agree with him, because we get into this, town employees, elected officials, appointed officials, volunteers, this and that, but I mean, we still have the safety net.
Yeah, mind you, I'm never gonna pay you. You can bill me, but I just don't feel right having a policy.
Yeah, we have, okay, so make the motion not to strike that.
Leave it as is.
Leave it as is.
From the two thousand sixteen policy?
In other words, the town employees, number one, to...
Oh, to not have the strike, yes.
Right.
Put it back how it is.
Okay, second, all in favor? Aye, okay. Now we need to, this is for the write-off, is that what you're talking about?
I believe you approved that from two fifty to five hundred.
Okay, and we approve the rate increase.
What's the bottom one?
This was, do you wanna begin a collection agency involvement, pros, possible returns, ten cents on the dollar?
That was the other one we needed.
And we said that didn't seem to make sense, right?
It does, but it doesn't because you're right back to, with the high deductibles.
But this is what we did talk about, right?
They talked about the high deductible being a new challenge.
And we're gonna have to continue to watch that and I don't know why that can't be... I did think about this a lot because I spoke about it because personally I'm affected by it, right? I have that kind of insurance policy. But I think that, why can't that be treated similar to any other debt to a town? You can't sell your house if you didn't pay your water bill.
Lean-wise or whatever you call it.
And if you take it a step further, you can't get your car back from the mechanic if you don't pay for the alternator you just put in, he gets a lien on your car. Why can't we do that to a person the same way I put a lien on their house?
If the residents of the town of Southwick...
If the residents of the town of Southwick, I get it, but that's, you know, and I know there's a percentage that it is, it isn't, but, you know, when you sign up for the high deductible plan and we're talking in this particular case, because this is gonna be a trend, you are signing up for all of it. And I don't think it's reasonable to expect that taxpayers of the town of Southwick to forego a bill because you don't wanna pay out of your HSA that you're obligated to pay under, right? And I get it, maybe you had a car accident or, you know, some other major thing and this is gonna be a major financial issue for you, but it's still, it should not immediately fall back, that's why you have the abatement process that someone could follow through and go, hey, you know, this, that, and the other, okay, we can hear that story and we can talk through it and figure out what's the right thing to do, but just on its face, someone who just ignores your bills because they know after they get three that we're not gonna do anything about it, well, that sets a bad precedent too. And I think we should, either we have to talk to town council to see what's the legal move there, but, and then sending it to a collection agency doesn't do us a lot of good. Like I said, you're gonna get pennies on the dollar and so basically you're gonna get five letters, goes to collections, then maybe they know they're gonna get a huge discount by waiting you out, it doesn't make any sense either.
All right, so why don't we make a motion to table this for further discussion?
This poor fellow.
And...
Leave it as is for now.
Leave it as is for now, but we will work with town council and like Doug said, I And like Doug said, I think that's a good idea, to see if there is a mechanism for Southwick residents to recoup that and maybe we come up with a different mechanism for people that aren't Southwick residents. Maybe we take a different approach.
Correct.
Some of the, some area towns, I know, I think Munson, Belcher Town, Budlow, they do a subscription service.
Okay.
And what that is, is it's a pre-bill. So they bill them like seventy-five dollars a household and should they have a balance or something, it's kind of like a backwards insurance policy.
Okay.
So, but that creates another whole accounting issue.
All right. That's, that's why we need to table this.
Right.
And leave it as is for right now. And just as I, I told him, after the holidays.
Yep.
Okay?
Which holiday? Easter?
Yeah. I think we got to get through that budget process. And, uh, but, but because we'll be working with town council, you know how he gets busy and, uh, we don't want to inundate him with...
Again, it's a policy, it's been out there, we flagged it, it's a trend that's starting to happen.
Oh, it's, and he's right. It's going to get worse.
Doesn't need a decision.
Well, you know what my bill was?
Yeah.
It was sixteen hundred bucks. All right? So I mean, I, I mean, that was a sticker shock to me, but...
Workers' comp cover it? Cause you got, you got hurt at work, didn't you?
No, I wasn't at work.
Oh.
Uh, but the insurance paid, I forget what they paid, you know?
I don't know.
Half, maybe, something like that.
Right, right. You're still on the hook.
Still on the hook for the rest. But, uh, so, but hey, that was only my second ambulance ride of my life, you know?
The night is young.
The night is young. All right. So we have an agreement. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right. Now that we were nice to let everybody take, take them out of order, now we can get back to our work. Uh, I, I know, I know, I'm, I, I promised. Pabels, uh, warrant number two zero one one dated eleven twenty-five nineteen in the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred, twenty-six dollars and eighty-six cents. Pabels warrant number two zero one five B, B as in Baker, dated twelve two nineteen in the amount of one hundred and forty-four thousand, seventy-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. I need a motion for minutes of eleven nineteen nineteen.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, work session minutes of eleven twenty-one nineteen, that's when we were with the, uh, school, correct? The roundtable and we're, it, it, this really should, instead of work session, should say a mandatory or required, uh, roundtable meeting with the school region.
Correct.
You know, rather than a work session.
It was a work session, right.
But...
It was posted, so...
Right. It was posted. Right. I would change that to roundtable and it is a mandatory requirement of, of the town's meeting with the school region. Uh, but we can take a motion to accept those.
As amended.
As amended? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay. We're going to go to the action folder, uh, one A. And let's see, that's the, the, no, that's the minutes. I, uh, okay. Here, Cindy, take those two. One A, applicants for CPC. We have two applicants. One is sitting right there, Deb, um, that you can read over there. And we have one from Tom McLafflin. Um, so we have two. It's, it's basically an appointment for six to five months because then we'll be switching over to, uh, elected members. So, and this is being caused by the resignation of Karen DeMayo, who is now on the finance committee, was appointed by the moderator at the finance committee. So she resigned. All right. I gotta be honest, I was out recruiting farmers and I got a farmer that agreed to do it in early November and, and you put yours in after that. And my thought process was this, so you know, it's nothing against you, is that we put my family farmers under Agriculture Preservation Act and I, I feel very strongly about that. And we had a, a, kind of a flare up at the town meeting and some agricultural land didn't get preserved and I thought it might allow a little bitter taste in some farmers' mouths. And I thought if we got a farmer on there that maybe there'd be a little more discussion about the importance of agricultural preservation land, even though it'd just be for a six-month appointment, but maybe, uh, it would, it'd make everybody realize the importance of that, cause that's near and dear to my heart, you know? Um, he has no intention of running, uh, for, for the position. He was just kind of doing it as, as a favor. So, um, so I already kind of, I recruited him, so I, I'm, I'm going to have to say that I'm going to recommend, uh, Tom and certainly nothing against Deb, cause I've worked with Deb and I'm, I'm working with Deb on a regular basis and she's an excellent candidate. So I, I have nothing bad that I can say about Deb.
Now, was Ruth Preston also, um, applied for or not?
No.
Not here anyways.
She, she went on the historical commission, but thoughts, gentlemen?
I, like you said, this is kind of a, I don't know what they've got coming, but they haven't met in a couple of months. They're probably not going to meet for a couple of months and you've got an election coming up in May and...
Do they have to meet?
No.
Well, no, yes, they have to meet because they got to prepare their budget, you know? So they have to meet.
They actually have to.
You know, they have to meet, you know? All right. So I need, need a motion.
I would defer to the chair. I'm like, I'll, I'll, uh, I know that you were looking to get a farmer on there and I'll put forth that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And again, nothing against you, Deb, I hope you're going to run for it, you know, and get on there because, you know, what you said in your letter hit home. You know, you have a deep concern and you'd be a good candidate. All right? But think about farmers, farmland, preserving it.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. And I moved to this town because it's an agricultural town.
Right.
And it's not city. So it's, I wanted to be a city.
Yeah.
All right, Deb, and we'll see you Saturday.
With...
Two fifty.
Tree lighting.
Tree lighting?
Oh, oh, okay. Yes. Sorry.
Cindy, we already did two A, so I'm going to pass that over to you. Three A, building inspector recruitment subcommittee. Uh, we, I think we already talked about the vice chairman, Doug Mogul, the CAO, Carl Steinhardt, uh, the planning board chairman, Mike Doherty.
Yep.
And, uh, the building inspector thought the fire chief, Russ Anderson, would be a good thing. So any problems with that? Want to make a motion?
So move.
Second? All in favor? Aye. It's unanimous. Five A, uh, this is, okay. This got a little confusing here. Apparently, uh, we have a member of the agriculture committee, a full member, wants to become a, an associate and they took a vote, but they don't seem to understand that we appoint, we have to do these kind of things.
Right. And I did tell them that.
You filled them in?
Yeah.
Okay. So I don't think Diana Flynn wants to become an associate member and Marissa Cook Orban, or...
Orbegon.
Orbegon wants to become the regular ma, uh, member and Melissa does a great job, so I have no problem making that change. Motion?
Sure.
Second?
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye. And, and when, when they do that, you know, you're going to explain to them, well, now we have the same thing that happened here on Lakes Management. Okay? Uh, they have, uh, they want to move our associate to a full voting member.
He was an associate for like five minutes.
Right. Uh, the other...
Murph.
Right.
Oh, but he'd been attending for a while.
Oh, I know, I know.
Right.
But it was funny, cause he, I talked to him about this when he wanted to get on it and I thought it was a great idea.
Okay. So I don't have any big problems with switching this around, uh, but we have to make it official.
I'll gladly make that motion.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
All in favor and make sure they know that we have to do it officially, other than that the town clerk is going to yell at us and we have that new software program that we just invested taxpayer money in.
They're pretty good over there waiting till they hear from me.
Okay. All right.
They don't do anything until they do. Yeah, we knew at the time.
Okay.
I was at the meeting.
Okay. Uh, seven A is from the, uh, Board of Appeals. They asked, uh, that we give them two more weeks so they could respond to the open space committee, their thoughts, so, and we agreed to that, so if we could forward seven A to the open space committee. And just while we're talking about open space, we're still waiting to hear back from the state. Uh, they're reviewing our proposal. If, once they give us the green light, then we can have Pioneer Valley print, start printing things up and we will be able to complete our open space and we're good for another seven years.
The open space was already sent this, but I'll just tell them.
Yeah, I know. I know. I already got it.
Okay.
Uh, eight A, okay, that's, we've already done eight A, that was on the police, uh, policy. Um...
You don't have to rush. I was just kidding about the hour.
Oh, no, no. This, okay. And this is just the, uh, information from the roundtable meeting. If the press was here, I would tell them it's not good news, uh, because this, the Commonwealth has determined that we need to put up a lot more money and that means a lot more money is going to be going to the school region, which means it's going to be harder for us to accomplish, uh, some of the projects such as roads, bridges, culverts and, uh, things like that. But the press is...
Millions of dollars too. It wasn't like it's ten or fifteen grand.
Right.
It's millions.
And, and don't ask me, when, uh, Dr. Berry was there, he said, oh, one more year and this is going to end, one more year it's going to end, and it doesn't end. It's a half a million or a million each year, you know? And I, I don't know, it's got to end. We, we can't.
Anytime that they've touched the chapter, what do they call it, the cherry sheet or whatever you call that?
Right.
It's always gone that, if you look at the percentage, there was a great article, I think, um, that I read on some of this, but the percentage of funding source for rural communities and, and regional districts is on a steady decline and the budget burden to cities, larger cities is on the dramatic increase. You know, you look at a city, you know, use Springfield as a bad example because of the income, some of the income numbers are skewed, but, you know, the state carries, you know, north, and I don't want to misquote, but it, you know, it's eighty-some, close to ninety percent of their budget is reimbursed by the state.
Yeah.
And our, our number's not anywhere near that, you know, with the, um, you look at the numbers I've written. And then they just redid the school, the base foundational numbers that just came out the week we were there.
Right.
Was that number, so it was still all new information.
Right.
But it, the news hasn't gotten any better with age.
No.
It's millions of dollars.
Right.
At the local level, that's got to, that we've got to come up with.
Well, it's, it's, okay, we're going out to bond and we have a very good rating and so we, we, on one hand, because we're conservative and, and run our community well, have great volunteers, everybody's working together, we get a great bond rating, but on the other hand, we get penalized.
Absolutely.
Because we can't apply for any of the grants because we don't meet the criteria, uh, we, we just keep adding to the, uh, our burden, the taxpayers face to fund the region because we're a conservative community and we keep all our ducks in row.
Yeah.
So it's...
And, and Grandville and Tallinn, I mean, they, they have a commensurate increase. Obviously they're, that in real dollars, it's smaller because of their, you know...
Right.
We, we so much dominate the region, but it's not an insignificant amount of money for them either as a reason. It's just if you look at, it's, it's a dramatic imbalance and where they're, where the state is choosing to put their money.
Right.
You know?
I understand the thought process, but, but when, when does it stop for us, you know? And, and Grandville's a prime example where they're in, uh, negative growth.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, what's, they're going to drive people out of the community that have lived there their whole lives.
Well, apparently that's starting to happen now, right?
Right. And, but it's going to just escalate. Uh, and I'd hate to see that happening in Southwick. Uh, that's why, you know, I think it was great, uh, kudos to Mike McMahon and the Economic Development Commission, your beautiful, uh, phone call, uh, small business, uh, Saturday. Kudos to them for, uh, getting out there, putting up the signs, going to the local businesses and trying to promote local businesses, uh, because that's what we're going to need to do is promote businesses, um...
Do you know, was there a lot of small businesses purchases made outside of that?
I, 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 it was one of the busiest ones that our, our business ever had.
Oh, good.
You know?
Non-funeral work?
Non-funeral work.
Oh, all right.
Non-funeral work, Mr. Didi. I was talking about gift items.
Oh, gift items.
Happy occasions.
You can prepaid for flowers for a funeral, okay?
Good lord.
All right. Let's move right along. Okay. Uh, we need to vote to adopt the revised, uh, inspector, building inspector, building commissioner job description. It's been reviewed by council, so...
So move.
Got a motion made? Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Cindy, there you go. Okay. Next thing, we, Michelle Hill, is there a need for a flyer in the town census mailing from the, uh, select board? And I would say, not from us, but two fifty, Deb? We need to put a flyer in there for all our programs?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wouldn't hurt.
Can we, do we have anything else? Any, any survey we'd like to do or anything like that?
No. We, uh...
I don't.
Okay. Could you tell her that the two fiftieth committee would like to place a...
Calendar of events.
Calendar of events.
Yeah.
And, uh, she can work with our outreach committee, give her Deb's name.
Yeah.
And, uh...
You're going to be just, you're going to be busy anyway.
But tell her that definitely we want, want that in there.
Okay.
All right. Uh, okay. Then we got, oh, we have to accept a donation to the, uh, police gift account.
K nine.
K nine account, uh, from, uh, uh, VFW, Ransford W. Kellogg, post eight seventy-two, two hundred and fifty dollars.
So move.
All in favor?
The next thing is just FYI, did you have that next thing?
Okay. All right. Next week, Tuesday, the regional school committee, cause they canceled their meeting, is going to be having their meeting in our auditorium. The reason for that is we need to have a joint meeting of the Southwick members of the regional committee and the board of selectmen to elect a person to fill in for the vacancy, Southwick vacancy. And that person will fill in for approximately two and a half years.
Yes, the remainder of term.
Because Kyle resigned and Kyle just got elected.
But that's unique for that board, right?
Right.
It's not till the next election it's for the...
Yeah. When we formed the region, that was the rule that was agreed upon by the two communities. So, uh, we have one candidate. Uh, we're very lucky. Um, she sent me her resume. It's a former school committee member who nearly lost an election, who would like to fill that vacancy. So we'll see, uh, how the votes turn out next Tuesday.